We're going to open the March 4 meeting of the Selectmen. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We thought that we would reschedule the Highway Facility Superintendent's monthly report since he probably was out all night plowing. So, we have another appointment at 7:20. We have no meeting minutes. We have appointments as recommended by personnel for an alternate building inspector while Joe is out, a second alternate building inspector, and a conditional local building inspector.
I'm not comfortable with this at all. When we were in executive session a couple of weeks ago, we agreed to work with our building inspector. And frankly, I've seen anything but. Richard Hanks does not have the commercial experience to deal with a lot of our commercial stuff in town. So to make him the first alternate does not make sense. He does not know how to use our software.
He has school building, a lot of school building experience.
I have two building inspectors that will tell you that he is not qualified to do the inspections for our commercial in town.
Okay. Claire, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, we weren't aware of that. And I understood he's a building commissioner. And he does not have a commercial license, if you will, but he has done the commercial buildings in the town of Berlin from 2016 through 2017 when our last building inspector was out.
Yep, and we had a lot less commercial going on at that point. I would be much more comfortable with either Tony Z filling in like we had talked about for two to three weeks.
Well, Tony is filling in, but my understanding from my conversation with the building inspector was he was only going to do it for two to three weeks.
Exactly. And then we had talked about Joe coming in and, or Joe working from home, which he can do.
No, he can't. Not with Family Medical Leave Act.
Yep, and he was forced out on Family and Medical Leave Act without the sanction of this board this week.
That is the process.
I thought he was on workers' comp.
Yeah, well, Chris took it upon herself to send him a letter this week forcing him out on FMLA.
After getting Town Council's advice.
But you don't get to Town Council advice. Town Council advice.
Yes, I do get Town Council advice.
But you do not get to make the decision by yourself, Chris. Once again, every time we come to this employee, he is single-handedly saying.
This was administrative, Lisa. And I'm really sorry that you're unhappy about it. But this is, this is the way that you treat your employees fairly. Every employee, every employee would have been treated the same way.
This is not the plan that we discussed. This is not the plan that we discussed.
There was no plan discussed. We made no decisions.
In executive session, we had a series of steps that we were going through.
I looked at the executive session minutes. There is nothing.
We did not vote on your actions.
Regardless, we have got three appointments to make if this board wishes to do so. I'll make the motion. Richard Hanks as the first alternate building inspector. David Horn is the second alternate building inspector. And Thomas Doer, conditional local building inspector as per the personnel. Anything else to be said by the board?
I think, I think Katie is here to speak for Joe, and I think she has permission to do that. So I would request that you allow her to speak.
I would give her permission, Lisa.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. No. This is a, this is a, this is a meeting of the Selectmen. It's not a public meeting. It's a meeting of the Selectmen in public.
And the building inspector has no input on what you've done here?
I'm sorry if he feels that way.
The building inspector isn't here to speak for himself.
The building inspector sent his wife with things in writing.
You can submit those to the board if you'd like.
Can I?
No. I'm afraid not. So there is a decision before the board right now?
I'm just going to ask you a question real quick. So, is it ethically speaking, you feel good that you sent him a certified letter? He's having a large tumor taken up tomorrow. You sent him a certified letter today discussing the fact that the original plan from the 11th, that he could do some work from home that would supplement the short-term disability, he would do the clerical stuff from home. And I have a list from what's off of his, his job description.
This is not even factual. You are not even, you, this is not factual. There were no votes taken. I checked the minutes before.
Then how do you get to decide everything?
I didn't get to decide anything. This was advice of Town Council. This is according to our personnel bylaws, our personnel policies, and the advice of council. Yes.
You think it's kind to send a certified letter to a man who's having a tumor removed in the morning?
I did not send him a letter.
It says from, no, no, no. It says from the town of Berlin. Cost you $7.15.
We sent him an email a couple of days ago about it.
You sent him an email on Saturday, which was classy. And Monday, today, we received this.
We wanted him to know as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, we've got a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I think you also want to look at the fact that he will be temporarily disabled, and we have an ADA issue here. So, just something to think about.
I already have thought about that.
His primary care physician sent him out.
Mary is also not part of the board.
I, she raised her hand.
She just looked at me. So, his primary care physician took him out of work retroactive to February 19th. This was not done in a vacuum.
Not for an, not for the same issue. This is not the same issue.
That's, that's up to the doctor to decide, not us.
And the doctor did decide that these were two separate issues. He had a sprained knee, and he has a tumor.
Well, then that, that information should be relayed to the people that are involved in making those decisions, not us.
That says sprain, doesn't say tumor. That says start date February 19th.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion passes two to one. The next thing on our agenda is the annual town meeting warrant update. I think there were some outstanding.
In blue are the things that have changed since the warrant last went to Town Council last week.
Okay.
The only thing I've heard from Town Council is they confirmed that they received this draft, but no updates on any of the things that have been flagged in it. So the changes are, we have documents now explaining what the Anna Hunt Trust is. And I'll send that to Town Council. You have alternative library capital fund article wording approaches.
Right.
You have the details now for the two other fire prior year unpaid bills.
Yep.
We still need the summary on Week Chief that PEG was going to draft.
Apologies.
That's okay. And no summary for subarticle section B of Article 38.
Should we talk about the library article, articles first? I think we just want to, like I said to you in an email, we want to do what the trustees would like to do. We just want to make sure that the engineering is covered.
I, I understand that. And, you know, our position is, the library is going to close unless we have septic system. You know, and that's why, since the last, and I understand what June had said, and I understand the concern. Unfortunately, we have the time limitation, and you're well aware of that because you all signed the agreement with the DEP. So, our position is this needs to be done. Whatever the amount is, will be what the amount is. We can raise it, but I don't think we can do set two articles. And I don't think that we can, we're not asking for a feasibility study. We're just asking for the septic to be replaced.
Well, if it was a feasibility study, it would just be the feasibility to see whether which septic is all it meant.
But that's not, reading that, that's not what that verbiage said.
All right.
So, you know, I'm, I'm going to leave it up to you, but our opinion is that, yes, this needs to be done. And I'm sorry that we didn't get an accurate quote. And, you know, we relied on Dave, and I understand that this is, this is a new position for him. And I, you know, as I was driving here, I was thinking, well, can we just put some language in now in terms of the amount? And can Dave, can he get us an estimate of what this is going to be before we have the town meeting, and then we can just change the warrant? I mean, I, I don't know, with, you know, without having an accurate figure, of course we can't say it's going to be $100,000 or. The $75,000 figure do come from Dave originally.
Right.
And that was why we added the extra 25, saying, well, if there's, you know, something in that.
I honestly think that sounds like the, that number would cover it, but you're no expert either.
I believe, I believe it would too.
Yeah.
And I'm not a, I'm not a septic expert. I know Bob Hyde went online and was looking at costs, and he said, well, under that amount. So it's, it's up to you what you, you know, ultimately what you want to submit in the article. But our, you know, our position is, it has to be clear that, yes, this is going to be done, and it needs to be done by a certain date.
Right. And I don't, I don't think that it's a good idea to put off the septic part of it until next May. That doesn't give us much time.
No, it doesn't, because we have to send out an RFP for that.
Right.
So I think we need, you know, whether this is going to be, the amount that it ultimately comes out to, don't know. You know, certainly we can give the town back any money.
Right.
So.
I'm just curious, has the library thought about alternate plans such as potentially a new library? Because based on what I've heard, I'm not totally convinced that we can fix this problem.
Oh, yes, we can. That was why we finally, you know, we've had a number of meetings with DEP, and Chris is aware of this now, even if she was at our last meeting. And that was why Tom Angel insisted that with the language about a tight tank be put into the agreement. Because if there's no other solution to this, that is the one thing that we will be able to do. And the tight tank is not that expensive. It's really the pumping of the tank that would be the cost. At this point, the library is 2% of the town's budget. And I think it's an important service. We have, you know, in terms of the amount, the percentage of people who use this library is much higher than many other tanks.
But we also have to have someplace to put the tight tank. And I think.
We can put it where the, you know, there's, and we were saying to Chris and Dave, where we have whatever the metal box is now would be where it could be placed. So, DEP felt comfortable agreeing to that. And they'd been out to the property. They've walked around, you know, inside, outside.
I guess I would still feel more comfortable if, if in some way we polled the town about whether they, they want to keep putting money into this building.
We did do that. We had it, an article two years ago, and we did our renovation article. You don't recall that?
I do remember that, I do remember that article, but I'm not sure that alternatives were offered. I'm not sure if people were aware of the depth of the issues with the building and the, the septic and all of these other things.
Well, I don't know what other things you're referring to. At this point, we're working on our long-range plan. We've invited you all to come. It will talk about what we're going to do in the next five years. Clearly, we can't close the library next month, and we can't close it without having another building. We can't propose anything in good faith to the town unless we first do our long-range plan, which as I said, we're working on this year. When I moved to this town, how many years ago, people, we had a million-dollar matching grant to build a new library. People denied that. You know, that was voted down.
But I think it was a really close vote at that time, and I think your demographics have changed.
It was a close vote. However, I have to say to you, most people in this town who come to the library say, I love this library. Part of our plan before we can do anything in terms of building would be to investigate having another site. That's not, you know, we haven't ruled that out. But right now, we need to look at this building. This is a municipal building. The only thing we're voting on right now is the septic. And that's, that's what the warrant article will be.
I understand.
You know, people can, people can say, you know, at town meeting, no, I don't want to put $100,000 into the septic, but I wish we could close the library.
I mean, do you think regardless of the, needing the septic, that even if it wasn't the library forever and ever, that it could be used for another, another purpose? I, I know it needs to be a library to some extent.
Well, to some, you know, there's a deed restriction.
Right.
However.
I think you can get by that in a matter of time. That's.
The town of Littleton had a similar deed restriction, and they were able to build a new library. There's nothing that we're going to be able to do in the next year. Hey, we're not going to be able to find a new location, and we're not going to be able to do plans, you know, for a new library. We are going to have our long-range plan. And the other problem is that we need to apply for a grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. The next cycle is going to be 2020.
You missed it.
Pardon me?
I said, then you'll have missed it, but for 2020, because you need to have everything in place.
Well, it's not even that we need to have everything in place. We don't even know if we'll get a grant, because we don't know there's going to be any bond money. So really, as library trustees, we want to see the library operating, and we need to have the septic repaired to do that.
Well, I don't think there's any question that, you know, you've submitted your article. I think we're just trying to figure out the language.
Yeah. And I just wanted to get out there that I think maybe in the future, we need to, we need to look at alternatives.
We would love to have a new building. I mean, you know, what can I say?
There are deficits with the current building, and I'm still, like I said, I have concerns about what the engineering is going to come back as, but.
Be a part of the long-range planning committee. Come, come to our meetings. Everyone is, you know, anyone here can come.
Got a few things on my plate.
Well, this is a concern for you. You know, you're invited.
She'll find some volunteers for, for that purpose, I bet.
But yes, I understand the verbiage is, is a problem.
Well, not really. I think that we just want to make sure that the engineering is covered.
Right. Absolutely.
And that's it. I mean.
June, are you comfortable with these? Because I know that you had some questions.
My only concern was that the way that it was originally worded was that it would only cover, for me, it would only cover the engineering and design with the installation. So my concern is that if, for whatever reason, because that's who I am, that's what I do, is if it should not be able to go through with the installation with that $100,000, I wanted to just make sure that it's worded properly so that I can pay for the engineering costs, even though we're not installing at the time. So that was my only concern. That's why I wanted to tweak it a little bit, just to say, we're going to cover the design, the engineering costs, whether or not it's installed. Just so that way there, it doesn't come back and go, yeah, no, it's going to cost us $100,000. Not that it's, I'm just saying, if it comes to a lot, and we can't cover it with that article, I don't want to be stuck, or you to be stuck without being able to pay that bill. So that was my only concern.
So, are you comfortable if we just make sure that?
Well, unfortunately, the way that June's article didn't, that's not what that article said to me in the terminology.
Are you comfortable with taking out the word feasibility? I thought maybe that was the sticking point.
This is, this is in the graph, right? And these are the alternatives, one and two, to be added to it?
Feasibility.
Well, that's one of the alternatives.
You can take that word out. Just take that word out.
If that, if that word is, if you just get rid of the word, it's just.
For your first one?
Well, we can study.
Alternative one?
It's really not a study. It's, it's an engineering and design.
But right now, we don't, we don't know for sure what the engineering costs are going to be.
Right. No, I understand that.
And the design and the installation. So I'm just concerned that if it comes to over $100,000, we're not going to be able to install it and do everything else.
No, they would have to go back for additional money.
Well, you know, as I said, you, I certainly understand. You're, you're an accounting person.
I know.
I get the figures. I'm not, I don't, not paying.
So you are comfortable with the first one?
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the first one, because that basically says a feasibility study, which is really not what we want. If we want to pay for each of the, I saved up a little bit of time.
I just want to make sure that each can be paid for separately if we don't do the project as a whole. That's my only concern.
Right. I'm comfortable with the second one, you know, we'll raise vote for the purpose of selecting, designing, engineering, and installing. Do we want to say selecting, designing, engineering, and/or installing?
Yeah, you can do that.
I mean, we can do and/or.
Does that work?
Does it, does that work for you, Chair?
Yeah, just as long as we can pay for it. That's my only concern. I don't want to be stuck and then say to you, you can't install a septic system, so I can't pay for anything.
Right. I also would like to raise, raise the amount to 150, that's it. I don't think that anyone is going to balk at that.
What does sunset cost? Well, even if it was 10, five years, isn't it?
If they wanted to put it in for all of them, you can't just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
It has to be used by 2020, because you have to have the system done.
We have to have the system done in a year and a half, so.
And/or as, or as many waivers as possible.
Are you comfortable with that?
Right. Maybe they'll give us a waiver. They'll probably give us a good vague waiver, because we'll be working on it.
I think when we start raising these numbers, I think capital planning has an issue. I think we're going to, we're going to go into borrowing and that sort of thing, just so that everybody's aware. I think they have.
Well, he did that.
Was, was this particular item in the capital plan?
Yes, and we met with them last week. They, they didn't have a problem with the $100,000.
Right. I just don't know whether they have the ability to take on the 150.
Is there a way? I mean, I can't speak for Dave. As I said, if we can find out, you know, just kind of get a ballpark. He said the 75 to Bob, I think he had, I can't even recall who it was in town, the septic, who was out there. And that's when he came in and said to Bob in the library, well, $75,000 will definitely cover it. That's where that number came from.
Okay.
You know, we didn't just kind of pick it up out of the air. So, June, or, you know, if you're not comfortable raising, I guess those would be the alternatives.
Like Lisa said, it's most likely that capital planning will have to take a look and see whether it would fit this year with an additional $50,000. I mean, I know things are tight for the capital plan. So if not, is $100,000 going to work for the moment? I mean, there's, there's, you know, next year's town meeting, or a special town meeting.
Well, that's what I was, that was my other thing, was a special, you know, a special town meeting.
We do want to make sure that it's done before the deadline.
Right.
And/or engineering. You know, I mean, at the minimum, you'd be able to get going.
Oh, well.
Engineering.
Yeah. I don't see this, you know, I see this as a small project. This is not, you know, we're not talking about a huge development. And, right, I don't want to take up any more time. So, I mean, I would say we could do, you know, the purpose of selecting, designing, engineering, and/or.
Okay.
You know, if people are comfortable with that. Or we could raise it to 150. We could do that and raise it to 150. If you want to speak to capital planning, see what they say.
Do we want to speak to capital planning, or do you think? The library trustee.
I prefer the library trustee, because you, they're going to ask you where you're coming up with that figure, and we can't say it except to say, it was posed to us for 150.
But we need, you know, that's why we need Dave, because he's the person who's going to do this, and he's got to be the person to come up, you know, to get.
Dave is probably in bed right now, sleeping.
And we're letting him do that, but, you know, unfortunately, he probably was too quick to make a commitment to do this.
Well, you know, maybe you should mention it to capital planning, that, you know, this is something you're thinking about. See what their reaction is, and then try to get a firm number.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So are we going with option two?
Well, Mary's putting this, are you?
Oh, no, I got it. It's and/or.
It's and/or.
And/or.
It's the only thing, so I think we can probably.
So we can, you know.
I think we can submit it that way at this point.
Right.
And, yeah.
Okay. Does that sound like a plan?
It sounds like a plan to me.
Okay. That's good.
Thank you all very much for your time.
You're welcome.
And I'm going to go home, go to bed myself. And hopefully have you two more spoken.
All right. So, would you like to come up?
Thanks for having me. So, a couple of things. The EDC concluded that it made sense about six months ago to generate its own website and its own social media plans. And as time evolved, and we started to draft something, Civic Plus got in the picture, and the website changed at the town level, we said, we better halt and get the review of Tom Galvin, playing board, and of course you as a third stop. So, you may have seen the email this afternoon. Did you see the email?
Yes, I did.
So, VisitBerlinMA is a tourism commerce site that we have in mind to, which we started to draft for free with Ask About Kids, Ask About Valley Kids. And as I said, we stopped because of what I said a moment ago. We want to get your temperature on an independent website. So we, I spoke to Tom. He thought in light of what we do and how we're doing it, it made a certain amount of sense to have an independent site. I'm going to come back to Tom. I brought it to the playing board last week, that and the Facebook page that you saw. And they were in favor of it as well. Let me come back to Tom. So one of the questions is, where is it going to be hosted? We are intending, or were intending to host it independently at GoDaddy. So in light of the Civic Plus option, I asked Tom if there's some free-form space, if you will, on Civic Plus, where we could host it there and not have it cost anything additional. He's going to look into that. But if not, we'll host it independently, assuming you support the idea of an independent website. If you looked at the Facebook page, it's not going to be a banter page, it's going to be a commercial comments page. And if you looked at it, you saw that we've posted along the way, we, me, post along the way interested, articles of interest to the community. So in the end, the question becomes, are you in favor of us creating an independent presence before we continue and embark on this journey?
Is, go ahead. I was just going to ask if it's, is there going to be an annual fee, I assume?
Yeah, so the domain is like $10, so it's a .com domain, and the hosting cost, I think, is in the hundred-something range. So we funded that with our budget, which we'll come to in a minute, so far. And hopefully, we can not use that and host on Civic Plus. But we don't know if there's free-form space, because the way it's created, it's really a form, since tended to be a template, the way we see it. And it may not be permitted, maybe for a small additional fee, we can use their site and not use GoDaddy. And again, Tom's looking into that. So we're going to try to not host independently, because it's just an added cost that is, while trivial, unnecessary.
I have to say that in general, I am uncomfortable with committees hosting their own websites, particularly from a longevity standpoint. You're very enthused about this right now, and you're here doing this right now, the next person may not be. I also don't think we're a tourist bureau or a chamber of commerce.[1732.54] The site that you referred us to was basically a tourist board site. And that's not the role of the EDC or the role of the town. So I'm not really in favor of the EDC spawning another website that has to be maintained and paid for. I would prefer that you fit something into the current structure of the website and use your Facebook page, which is free. But I would also recommend that you give Tom Galvin as our IT, the passwords to that. The IT committee has been working on a policy in regards to that. And we want to make sure that if spamming happens or something happens that, or whoever has, like, you leave and you're the one with the password to the Facebook page, somebody within town government has access to those pages that committees are...
Passwords are not bringing her. So it's not a Chamber of Commerce. It's commerce and tourism. We want to draw people to the community to share what we offer. That's part of our, part of our mission, right? We want to support the malls. We also want to support other businesses and our trails and other resources that we offer. So it's not Chamber of Commerce concept. It's more commerce concept. And tourism is pretty obvious. Unless the board or the community is not in favor of drawing outsiders to the community, then this would defeat that purpose.
I don't think it's an either-or. I just, I'm not in favor of doing it this way.
You just prefer that he do it within the Berlin, Town of Berlin website?
Exactly, because that will be maintained by the town.
Okay.
By spawning another website, you have another website out there that, you know, in three years will be obsolete, and Peter may not be on the EDC, or the EDC may change directions. So you have something out there that nobody's then maintaining. And you're also, you know, it's a cost, yearly cost for something that really, I don't think is the role of the EDC.
You think you can accomplish what you want to accomplish within the Town of Berlin website?
So my vision was to have two. The conventional one that we all have, all departments committees will have. We'll continue that in the same look, and then a separate one, much like the example that you had seen, which is much more public-friendly, let's call it, a little less government-looking-like. So if you oppose the independent site, then what we could do is, if you consent to it, is keep the domain, point it back to a different page, and do our best. If you support it, then we'll do what we plan. And if you support neither, then we'll simply have the government EDC page, and that'll be the end of it. But I think that continuity is an important point that Lisa makes. And I think we can accomplish that because, at least I know I can accomplish it because if I leave, I'll pass along not just that, minutes and many other notes that I would have, and hope to have some kind of continuity to the next person on the EDC that handles it, whether it be the chair or otherwise. As far as the passwords, it makes total sense. And the Facebook page, you seem to be supportive of. So it just becomes the question of, you know, whether the three of you, if Lisa's opposed to it, or all three of you are opposed to it, and what your input is.
I am in total agreement with Lisa. I don't think that we need two websites. If you want to draw people to the Town of Berlin, then you draw them to the Town of Berlin, where they can go, and they can look at our departments, and they can look at other things. I don't, I don't want a separate one because if you go rogue and do your own website, June goes rogue, does hers, Mr. Concanon goes rogue and says, "Oh, look, fire needs another one."
In fact, we just brought the fire department back in because they had gone rogue.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole point was to draw everybody back into the main website so that it could be maintained under one umbrella.
So, no, I'm not in favor of additional websites.
Okay. And you, are you okay with keeping the visitberlinma.com?
Who's paying for that?
We are.
You have a budget?
Well, barely, but yes.
Well, it's not a budget. It's an article.
Yes.
That was last year.
Exactly.
No.
No what?
No, I would say no, we are not in favor of keeping that.
Agreed.
Is that, now, is this the, which one was this?
The visitberlinma.com domain.
I looked at your email. Is that in there today? I don't remember seeing that one, but I remember seeing the one about commerce and...
Yeah, it's here, towards the end.
You purchased a domain name.
Oh, okay. Yeah. There wasn't anything there, though. Because, like you said, it's not, yes. I just didn't remember.
Well, it's hosted. It's just not drafted and deployed.
Yeah.
And, all right, so no website, no independent website, and what do you feel about the domain?
No.
The domain?
Visitberlinma.com.
Because, again, you're setting precedents. Again, you're spending money.
I think they do want to keep, you know, and I think it's probably good to keep everything.
We'll drive it back to the government site.
No, but it's still got to be maintained. It's still not the, it's not a Civic Plus template. It would still be something entirely different that had to be maintained. You're not fixing the problem.
We'll go back to Civic Plus.
No. Well, it would be hosted there, but it wouldn't be, no.
No. At the end of the day, no other websites, no, no Visit Berlin, no.
So the Facebook page you're okay with?
Yeah, that was fine.
That's fine, as long as you, like I said, make sure that Tom has the information.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. Three or four budget things. This was in my mailbox, our EDC mailbox. Did you see this? Did you get your own copy? Talking about budgets, it has an invoice. Did one of us not?
No, no. We get that every year. They just presume and hope that the town will be a member of it.
So do you want to decide now or at some point in the future if you want to join?
They haven't done it.
I don't think we have done that in the past.
Okay. So now, okay. I asked Marty, switching to film for a minute, I asked Marty Miller to assist me with some more pictures. He's going to approach you if he hasn't already to use the work-off program, to get paid for some of that. So if you positively consider that, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I actually, Marty actually spoke to me, and he is willing to do this. It would be about 75 to 100 hours to do what Peter is asking. But it would allow us to have up-to-date pictures of most of the buildings in town. So it's really...
So it's beneficial for everybody?
It would be helpful to have that for June's purposes because she has to have an inventory of assets anyhow. It would be dual-purpose, perhaps.
Is this just, what kind of shots?
I think it's inside, outside, both.
It's interior shots, exterior shots, in categories, as you may have seen on the Berlin Mass Film Site. I'm sorry, the Mass Film Site.
Oh, I'm sure.
So I'll help him with access and contact and so on. Talking about budget or our, what are your temperature on giving us a $500 budget, annual budget, whether we jam it in this year or in the future?
No.
There you go.
No, I mean, it's...
You'd have to defend it, that's for sure.
Just back of a minute, did we approve Marty or not?
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought he was going to request it. No, I thought he was going to request it. Did he through you?
He did. He just is not comfortable here at all.
Oh, yeah.
At the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I just thought maybe he was going to send an email or something, but, okay.
So if you make that motion now?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
No, no. If it's multi, if it helps everybody.
I will let him know and Peggy know and copy you in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
There's usually a form to fill out, a request for it.
Right.
I could fill it out and copy planning if it's an EDC request.
For the extra hours?
Because you're...
Are we, are you treating this as a budget item or a warrant?
No, it's not. It's work-off.
It's work-off.
So is that, I have no idea how to do that.
It has nothing to do with you spending. It'd just be using a town photographer. He has a position called Town Photographer.
So since you're through planning?
Do I have to do something?
No, I don't think so. Since you, EDC is through planning and the selectmen, then this person who's going to help you out has to go through both of us, I guess. Is that correct?
I can send it out.
So do you have to make a motion, grant him something, or no?
No, he'll just...
Don't harm him. He may as well.
I move that Marty take the photos requested within the boundaries of 75 to 100 hours on the work-off program for the whatever.
Second?
Second. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And last but not least, do you want to consider a film budget at some point? I don't need any money now, but I think that's something that should be on your radar.
Well, it's probably, I'm guessing, a little late to submit a budget for this year. If you were considering doing it next year, you'd have to comply with the timelines, of course. And then you'd have to defend it, perhaps to us and the finance committee and so on, and explain what you would be using it for. Because it wouldn't be like, you know, it's not a blank check. It has to be for specific things that you know you might be spending the money on.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for me?
June, do you have a question?
I do. Based on what you just discussed, there is a reimbursement request in that file of Lawrence for this website.
Does that mean there is?
Yeah, so we already spent the money on the website and the domain, the hosting. So that's something that we brought to the Playing Board. They approved and I submitted.
Okay.
Out of the special article.
And they did approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask that before you spend, you seek permission. Because, again, we don't want people going rogue and just spending money and then coming up and saying, "Maya Copai already bought this. It's okay, right? You're going to cut me a check?" No.
I assume one of your members fronted the money?
Yeah. And I attended a course, a $35 course, which is the other of the two reimbursements.
Yeah. Just, I think you just need to let us know in the future.
And seek approval ahead of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's okay to pay that?
Yes.
We signed it.
Okay. Just checking.
All right.
All right. Any other questions?
No. I thought the information was very good.
Thank you, Peter.
In the previous email and this one today.
Glad you liked it.
All right. Thanks. Welcome. All right. We'll go back to the warrant and...
Sunset? Through me?
Yep. We can, I didn't know if you wanted to have a discussion on the sunset clause.
I think it's a good idea. I think we can just follow. Harvard looked like they had very good examples. I think we could do the same thing that they did. And then we wouldn't have to go through these warrant articles over and over. We could just have dates where they expire.
Okay.
Agreed.
So would it be our responsibility, I assume, to put the, what the sunset is in each article? Or in specific articles?
I think that you would request input from whoever's putting the article forth so that if it was a long-term project, you don't kill it.
Right.
Yeah.
You know.
Or you don't extend it until...
It looked like one or two years was like the longest period of time.
Or you're not kicking something out for 10 years, just to sit on pot of money.
Yeah.
I can do that tonight.
Thank you.
To go through and put a date.
Deadlines from people as to when they actually expect to spend the money. So you have real sunset clauses.
You want to do that, request through email?
I can, and give them a deadline. They like deadlines.
I'm asking the board, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Either one or two years.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Not a decade.
Okay.
I can do that tonight?
Yeah.
If you'd like, okay.
That's fine. Thanks. And there was some mention in an email about having town council attend annual town meeting, and I assumed that you would agree to that, but I wanted to...
With a certain expertise, perhaps, or just not, no concern?
I would think marijuana.
Yeah, so I'm thinking towards the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will ask.
And are we going?
And do you want two days?
That's what I was going to ask. Are we going one night or two?
How many articles do we have?
A few.
Five?
Yeah, but if you take out the 16, then how many are there? 40-something?
64. Can I take out?
Forty-six.
The 64.
Oh. If we post for two nights, meetings, when we end up getting it through in one night, and that works too, correct? Or do we have to post?
Well, what happens is you have a deadline that you must act by, and then you vote if you want to go past a certain witching hour. Is it 11 o'clock here?
No.
11. And then you can just continue to a date certain the next night, usually.
Right.
Or plan for that, hit the front end and divide it like they did last year.
Because otherwise, you have to post two separate meetings with two separate agendas. Am I right?
No, no. We put out the warrant with a date at the beginning of the first chunk, and at the second end of the same document was the date and time for starting. It was consecutive nights. It was pre-announced and predetermined in advance that it was two separate, one meeting, two dates, with these articles on this date and these articles on that date.
Right. But if you do it the way we have done it in the past, a few years ago, and it went longer?
Yep.
You just continue from where you leave off on the second night.
You do. But then the public doesn't know that for a fact, you're going to start the second night on a certain article.
Right.
They're going to assume that we're going to start at whatever number you posted.
Wherever you left it off at.
Yeah.
We still, even though we divided it last year, you had to recall the treasurer's article on night two to fix a mathematical, a minor mathematical error. So it doesn't really prohibit you from going back and revisiting what happened the first night. You could even totally revive an article from the prior night if you wanted to. That's the risk of, you know, of any town meeting that goes more than one day, but...
I think you can even revive something later in the town meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because if we go two nights, then we only have the town council show up for the second night?
They came both nights last year. It was different.
I think you still need to have them there.
We usually have one for town meeting.
What pops up?
They had a regionalization person one night, and then they had marijuana the other night last year.
Right. I think it was because there were those two big discussions that we assumed were going to happen, and divided it appropriately because of that.
And even if you want to put it all one night, I don't know how you want to set up the marijuana discussion. You know what I mean? There's no summary submitted for it. There was a suggestion, too, by the, to change the article headings, which are not that big of a deal, I didn't think.
That's fine, whatever.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a big, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I just wanted to make sure you talked about it. So change it as she suggests.
Sure.
Okay.
They're her articles.
Yep. But like I say, no summary for that. And I don't know if you want to put that on at this point, but I don't know how you set this up to stop the confusion.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, those are not our articles, correct? Those are citizens' petition articles.
Right.
I have a lot of trouble thinking we're going to get through this in one night, but I don't know if there's a natural split either.
I know.
The split would come at 11 o'clock, the decision. And then the second night could be shorter, hopefully.
Okay. So are we going two nights or one?
Well, you could either plan to go one night and go two if it goes over, or we can go ahead and just post the meeting as two nights.
It's probably worth posting for two nights, just so people can plan.
Okay. Which, where, or what items would you suggest we put on, say, the second night?
47.
If you stocked at 34, the energy committees, and started with 35, the week chief, that might be your...
Oh, sure, thanks. Make me kick off the second night.
But it is kind of halfway-ish. It gets you through your spending. The energy thing isn't like a really controversial thing. It's just putting hands on the adder and creating an account. And then after that is probably going to be your biggest draw, to have a fresh start on the night.
So you're saying 35?
After 34 and before 35. So 35 is when night two would start.
I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Do you want the same experts on night one? It doesn't really matter, probably. I don't think anything before that's all that controversial. So marijuana?
Just general first night. Probably it'd be Brian, right?
Are we going to pay for babysitting, or is there going to be babysitting? Remember how last year there was?
I think Julie Lee organized that last time, and they did have...
Just because there was a lot of, towards the school.
But it normally goes through, like, Link or something like that. I had requested that we maybe talk about having a budget for that, and I think it was denied last year.
Yeah. Usually, I mean, specific articles might have...
Well, that's why I'm saying, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking that the second night will probably have more of a draw and a need for children to be watched than some of the ones in the beginning.
I can reach out to Julie and see if they're talking about organizing anything.
Okay.
On week chief, Peg handed me her, uh, super short.
I had emailed one over, too, that it took like two minutes to raise.
It's to place a vote before the town to revoke the strong chief and/or vote on week chief.
How's that?
Yeah. Super short. Maybe not necessary, but...
The only thing I did was I actually put the difference between the two.
Okay.
So if you want to, I can either show you quick, or we can go with that one. But I thought it might be helpful to have the description.
Yeah, it's the two main differences, and I think that's what folks need to understand. And then some other items that I'll be speaking over with Chief Concanon and the folks on his staff.
This article would change the fire chief...
I heard that, I heard that, don't be scared, I heard that.
Here's what I sent over. This article changed the fire chief from strong to weak. A strong chief must be fired for cause and has the ability to hire and fire employees. A weak chief is an at-will employee and needs the approval of the board to hire or fire employees.
But there's other things, it's not so much just moving it. There are other items that I'd wanted to share with the town, which was my justification, not just those two, but other reasons. And I'm afraid if people look at that, they're just gonna look at those two items.
Well, you're welcome to speak to it, but this is actually what it does. And that's what the summary's for, that, that's what it does.
I prefer just to go with generic and let, let me speak to it. I might even make a little presentation in the back, hand it out to folks. I am not wearing a costume to the town meeting. Look, I'm saying that on camera, I am not wearing a costume to the town meeting.
There you go.
Maybe the meeting before, but no, just kidding.
Okay, is there anything else we need to...
Did we find out, like the trash compactor and that sort of stuff?
They've not answered. I have not heard from CPC or the Board of Health. So do we take a resolution?
And I just wanna reiterate, I think we talked about this last meeting, was that what is the effect of, Lisa, your article on select board to be, you know, how will that affect? I'm sure town council can answer that.
Council was coming back with that.
Yeah.
Did the van come out?
The who? Yeah, the van's out.
Yeah.
But the hardware's in?
Yes.
Okay, software.
And then we, were you the one who mentioned having the dollar amount that each item...
I, you know what, I would love, and I don't know if finance could do that, but I would love to see that, because that's always my question, if you're saying, "Rose and appropriate, you know, raise and appropriate 47,000, 400,000, 15,000," that it says, "This is what it means to you in taxes."
I don't think we can do the math for that, I think the math is too complicated, frankly.
Really?
Yeah, I really do.
But they did it with CPC, CPA, there's too many acronyms. The, thank you, the CPA, where Buzz stood up and said, "If you do this, it's only going to be $5 on your, you know, or $20." So I would love to...
Well, they use the tax rate from that year, but it's, that's a moving target.
Because we do a split tax rate now, you can't just do it like that, it's more of a calculation.
So there's no...
They could do a guesstimate, maybe?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Or you've gotta make sure you stress it's a guesstimate, because once you throw numbers out, a lot of times, people will say, "It was only gonna cost us five bucks."
I know, but here's my concern, is that when everyone sits in the meeting and goes, "Aye, aye, 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 aye," and then the tax bill comes in and everyone falls to the floor because their taxes have gone up, they didn't realize by going, "Yes," that my tax bill just jacked $600. That's all I'm saying, is to, again, educate and inform the town.
You could possibly do it based on a prior year tax rate, but you couldn't do it on, that's the only...
You're talking to the accountant now.
I know. I'm looking right at it, I got eyes on it. So, like-ish, you know.
So it would be hard, because there's so many variables.
There's too many variables here, and I would be uncomfortable giving, doing that kind of math and putting it on, it would make me very uncomfortable.
Do other towns do this?
I haven't seen it.
Do you know what towns? Yeah, Air. I'm not sure if Harvard does, I think Harvard does.
Do they have a split rate, though?
I think so.
Air does, Harvard doesn't.
If you didn't have a split rate? Correct, but we have a split rate.
Air has a split rate, Harvard doesn't.
I think it's a good idea, Peg.
I don't think, certainly not for this one.
Does Harvard do it?
Harvard doesn't have a split rate, I thought Harvard did make presentations based on how much...
I'll ask them, I'll ask them how they do it.
Yep.
And base it on certain assumptions. If your home is worth $300,000, you're gonna pay this many dollars more.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause that's what was done last year. I mean, I'll gladly email Buzz and the other finance folks and just ask them if it's possible. I just think that we owe it to the town, that when people are voting, that they're truly looking at it and understanding it, and understanding the impact, instead of just going, "A room full of ayes, and then the four noes yell the loudest," you know, in the room, so. All right, I'll email Mr. Buzz.
All right, well, maybe check out, find out what Harvard or Air does first, and then, and then email. All right, are we, are we good then with the warrant?
So did we, I'm just asking again, are we taking off the things that weren't approved by capital planning at this point? Since we haven't heard from people?
And those items?
The highway truck was moved out of here, wasn't...
Six, I'm sorry?
There's the transfer station, there's the highway service utility truck, there's the fire EMS pickup truck, I think, Jim, did you have something to say about that? That was...
As far as I know, that was removed off the warrant.
And were you comfortable with that?
We're going for the pumper tanker this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's more essential to us than the pickup truck.
Okay.
Okay, so that's an okay to remove? Okay.
Okay. So it's just those other two, the highway truck and the compactor? And the building, the public safety building roof?
I thought they had put the highway truck, moved it out of here, am I wrong?
The fire truck was moved out of here by capital planning.
The highway truck.
That was also moved out of here by capital planning.
Okay, so...
Her question is, you know...
Do we leave them on anyway?
Yeah, do you want on, right.
Right, okay.
And the roof, the public safety roof is also in yellow?
The roof?
Public safety building roof.
Peg's laughing, I know.
Roof. I'm from the Midwest, and it's not gonna change.
I just chuckle, I just chuckle every time you say, it takes me a minute. And then, but no, I just chuckle, so thank you for that.
It's okay, Lisa, I said, I used to say roof too, till people made me feel bad.
I'm not susceptible to that kind of peer pressure, thank you.
All right, so we're taking out, what, 14, 17, 19?
Well...
Take them out, if somebody wants to scream, I guess they scream at this point, 'cause we've been over backwards, I think, to get...
And did capital planning let these different groups know that they're pushed out?
Capital planning wasn't even aware of the Board of Health transfer station, compactor. They couldn't even inform them because they didn't have it. Sue said, "My bad, I guess they didn't get it somehow." We wouldn't get it because it doesn't come through as an appointing authority, so I don't know how that happened. Do you know if that ever went through you? 'Cause you get all the budgets before they go to FinCom.
From what I can gather with Sue is that it wasn't given direct to capital planning, she just included it with her budget.
Uh-huh.
Is what I think happened. She didn't understand the new process of it had to, capital planning form had to go to capital planning prior to the budget.
Oh, does 24 come out too? That's the pickup?
Yes, and 19, the roof, 'cause they moved that to next year.
Okay, so 14, 17, 19, 24?
I'm gonna say about 14, 14's coming out?
I'm willing to listen if somebody wants to come and discuss or fight for them, but I am not sure if...
Can we let them know and...
Yeah, you want them to come next week, or extend it in communication?
Well, just ask if they're interested in...
You already did, right?
I did, but I can...
Oh, okay.
Well, she came in and to me said, "Oh, I'm sorry, it just, it must not have gone to the right direction." That doesn't answer, like, can they live one year without it? I don't know.
Okay, so we're...
Want me to, you want that for next week? Do you have any answer for next week?
Yeah, why don't you...
Deadline of like Thursday, Friday, answer please?
Right.
Okay.
Are we still on top of the deadline to send this to town council? Oh, it's been to town council.
They've only confirmed receipt, but no feedback yet.
Okay, well, we're way ahead of the game as far as getting it published, and I'm assuming.
Do we get summaries from Chief Concanon on 25, 26, 27?
Those are the unpaid prior year bills.
There's still a lot of researching what those are for.
Well, we put them in, June gave me numbers, and I put them in the vendors' names. Oh, are you researching whether they're really unpaid?
Researching what they outlined.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So we good otherwise?
I think so. Oh, um... Well, the next thing on the agenda is the capital planning committee. I had about an hour-long conversation with Dave Westling to discuss the concern about leaving something on the plan that the selectmen voted no to this year. I reiterated that the mission statement and the bylaw say that they are advisory and recommend to the selectmen and the FinCom. He said that we, they don't have another meeting planned. They'd have to post a meeting if they were gonna go back and discuss it, or to even change the plan. So I'm thinking the only, the only thing that we could do is put together a letter to the capital planning committee and/or the appointing authorities, and just let them know that we are, we would like it changed. Or we could revise the plan with the annual town report committee. I don't know how comfortable they are with that.
You can't, they can't change a report that they get from another, they are not allowed to do that.
No, we can't do that.
Or we could request to put a comment in the annual town report, or we could just let Peg get up and talk about a town meeting. So I'm just throwing out...
Then I'm gonna wear a costume.
I've already made my opinion on this clear, it just doesn't matter.
Well, you know, I take, I think it does matter, only because, once you put something in a plan, it's there for people to realize that it's coming down the road, and they don't know that yet. They don't know that it's coming down the road, because we've denied it completely this year. Correct? And next year could be a different story, I mean, it could come up again, and we could, we could say...
The whole plan will change again next year. I think that's what happened this year.
It'll move the car forward to that year. And then what, we just keep denying, putting it on the warrant? I think as an advisory committee, that they really should be. They make their recommendations, and then we take them under advisement.
I mean, I'm a little disappointed in them, that we asked them to remove it. They said they'd talk about it, it was total disregard for the board. They left it in there. So I'm okay with either the letter going, or footnote, or I'd be happy to stand up and just let folks know that this is not a done deal. There was an agreement with the building inspector, we talked about it, he said, "Okay," pulled it, pulled the mileage, and voila, it shows up on a report, so... I'm fine with one, two, or three, whichever's easier. One being the letter, two being the footnote, three, I can stand up at a town meeting.
Okay. Pick one. Or...
I can draft letters for you if you'd like, and a footnote if you'd like, to review at next week's meeting.
Okay.
You're on your own on number three.
Oh, I'll stand up on number three, I'm okay with that. Again, educate the folks that are voting for all this stuff in town, so, yeah.
Okay. I think we covered, covered it, unless there's something else with capital planning? Was there?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Except for, June was gonna revise the form to include a signature line for the appointing authorities to sign off on capital requests.
Yeah, I figured I'd meet with finance committee, capital planning, and eventually the board, to see if there was any revisions, like we kinda do it for budget time.
I think there was some, people weren't clear either, that which form they should use, am I right? Some used the ones from previous years.
Unfortunately, I tried to get the new, the form that I was given, I needed to switch it over so it was fill-outable. That's not a word, right?
Fill-outable? We just made it up.
So, and I had switched it over, and when I sent it to be uploaded, it wasn't uploaded, and then... So the old form was there, a lot of people use the old form, not the new form, so it was my fault.
Oh.
I take whole bank.
Well, my hope is that when we get a TAN, they will have gone through a budget process somewhere else and can maybe bring some things in from that community, and we can tweak it and smooth it.
Try to make it smoother next year.
That's my hope. We'll see.
So yeah, so I'll make a request with revision to the capital plan and see if they're okay with it. So that's what I'm saying, I've heard, so. And do it earlier, and do it earlier.
Right. Well, we did talk about that when I talked to Dave, too. All right. Annual town report update. Hey, would you like to give us an update?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, how's it going?
It's going great. Actually, we've had three meetings, and we're ahead of schedule, I guess, from last year, yeah. I think we have six or seven, we're still missing six or seven in that area? We're still missing...
That's really good, we were missing six and seven about a week before printing last year.
Yeah, we were talking about that, so, um, I guess Barry wants to be able to put part of it online before? This I'm not that clear on.
Lori, once Lori does it, it can all go online.
Right, okay, so I think that we're on a really good schedule to get it online, pretty far ahead of time.
That has nothing to do with the printer, Lori just hands over a PDF and it gets posted.
Yeah, so, no, I think we're doing really well, yeah. There's a couple, but we've gotten most of the big ones. I think the biggest one that's missing is Brolin Memorial School. But, and then a couple from Barry. But, yeah, it's good, I'm good.
Hey, a month ago, you were at 23.
Does, does the board wanna request a draft review?
I trust Trisha. No pressure.
What does that mean? Do you wanna see the, you wanna see a draft?
Well, just when you have, when Lori finishes, before you send it to the printer, just send it over to the three of us. They're gonna look at it.
So our next meeting is not this Friday, but the following Friday? And then I could get a draft then?
When, you know, yeah, if you can.
Or you want it completed? You want a completed draft, or you wanna see it?
It'd be nice when, if you just, once when it's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have to send repeated, just once when it's done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well done, thank you.
Yeah. I'm not doing that much. I mean...
You're there, and you're helping, and you're pushing, so.
All right. FY20 budget requests. We have revisions for 32B health insurance.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Just remind me now, what was the revision? Oh, it was...
You got the numbers, didn't you?
Yeah, I think you got the more specific numbers.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the communications budget, which now includes the dispatch?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Anything else to be said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I put this, wait a minute, accountant, yes. I would like to know whether the board is in favor of, I believe this was submitted as 40 hours, am I right, June?
Yeah, and it didn't make it through personnel.
No, it was done at 35.
No, I mean, when you submitted it originally, though, was it at 40? No.
35, I went with what personnel...
Okay, all right.
Based on 35.
Okay. So, I think-
That would be at their rate, but for 40.
Right.
So, she's finally up to average salary, but not getting paid for a 40-hour a week.
Right.
She puts in far more hours than 40 hours a week.
So, it sounds like, do I hear a motion?
I hear a motion to move the town accountant to a full-time salary, 40 hours a week.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But I'm not sure this is going to get through finance.
I know, but we'll go in lobby. Maybe if we go en masse, it'll help. But we can't go en masse, because then you'd have to post a meeting, so we'll just-
You can post a meeting.
To show up.
Well-
Yes.
If we're putting this in for, for them to see on Wednesday night, am I correct?
Well, yeah.
Because we have another meeting-
You're not on their agenda Wednesday night.
No.
They don't know it's coming.
Right.
So, they either take it up Wednesday night, and you show up as an otherwise posted public meeting, or it can go on next week's, whatever they choose to do.
Well, what I'm thinking is that Wednesday is the 6th, and I believe we have a 40B presentation that night, too.
You want to ask them to be on next Wednesday's agenda?
What, the 13th, or next Wednesday?
Uh, would be the 13th.
Right, yeah. Let me see, they don't post their meetings in advance, so it's hard to tell.
But I do think that they're-
March, sorry. I was looking at April.
I think they're meeting every week.
Yes, they're meeting every week, I think.
I think that's what it says on the-
Room reservation.
My town government.
Yes.
Actually.
So, is that, I'd be fine with, if you want to wait till a week from Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay.
Let them know.
Sure.
I could post that.
All right. I said all in favor, right?
Yes, you did, we voted yes.
All right. And it's kind of come to our attention that the assistant accountant may need some overtime to help out with, you want to-
I would love to call her assistant accountant, because that's what she really, really is.
Well, it's on my paper here.
She's a counting clerk.
Her title is accounting clerk.
Okay.
Which isn't fair, but that's what it is. Depending on what the situation is, to hopefully assist and make it a smoother transition in the fire department if needed. Currently, I don't have extra money in my line item to help, and, I mean, I'm salary, so it doesn't matter, but if I need any extra help from Amy, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the fact that I could actually do it, so that's why I came to you prior to versus-
Afterwards. That's a good thing.
Jim, are you, do you feel at this point, knowing what you know, that we need to audit the fire department budget? I know you were going to do some checking.
I'm being, I'm looking at a shortage for, right now, coming up. I think we may know that we're pretty close to being past. So, I'm just working on trying to forecast what I need for the last third, working with Jamie, see if we can forecast what we need. It's sort of unpredictable as far as the brush fire season, what that throws at us. We have a couple of big events, and then everyone's out to play, and we need all hands on deck for that. And that runs, that runs some receipts. So, we're trying to figure out what, how to handle it. I know that there should be some savings with the salary offsets from prior chief of mine, so we're just trying to get a grip, get a grip on it, see what we can do.
Are you concerned that there might be issues with the books in some way, that, that Amy and June would need to go through and spend time doing a line-by-line audit of the fire department budget?
I'm going to look at it, tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting, and we're going to go through it, Jamie and I, and see where we are, and we'll go up to, we'll talk with June, I think.
Okay. So, can we maybe table this and revisit it next week, after you guys have had an actual chance to talk about it?
But we are, we're actually, we're looking at a shortage coming up like very soon.
Well, how about if we, they take a look tomorrow, or whenever, and if you feel like you need, you need to do some overtime of some kind, then let us know.
Okay, thank you.
And we can discuss it next week if we need to.
Okay.
Okay? All righty. Departmental updates. Fire EMS chief, would you, do you have anything you'd like to update us on, Jim?
Excuse me?
He started today.
I know.
No, 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 he started, he's been, he's outside now. He's all bad.
Thursday.
Sorry, I was-
Probably a week ago.
I was drifting off when you asked.
Well, it's on my agenda here.
I was on standby. My heart, I went to standby.
So, it's just on my agenda here, departmental updates, fire and EMS. Is there anything you'd like to update us on, or are we good?
We're still figuring out.
Yeah, yeah, we're good, I'm just still working through the office right now, so, I think the, the money's the main concern right now.
I was going to say, do you maybe want to give you an update about the hotel while we're here?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to my marshal on that. I did tell, you're aware of the broken tender, which is the vehicle that is, one of the vehicles that's up for replacement.
Oh, I think so, yes.
So, we're going to see if we can, I'm digging through paperwork to see if I can find any information, and see if we can get at least a cheap estimate on the scope repairs. It's, I don't know, spend any money, it's very old, but we'll at least, we'll at least investigate what, what we think it needs, just very soon.
Dave, do you have a bit of a report on how it's going?
I spent last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday inspecting the hotel, final inspections, and came up with a lengthy list of deficiencies, both on the life safety aspect, as well as in other areas of other contractors, electrical, elevator issues, and so forth. They have been pushing to get a temporary CO, so I don't know where that lies. I sent the building department a report, it's their decision on what, what they do for a temporary CO, how long a period, as well as, there needs to be discussions on some of the deficiencies that need to be corrected before they even open. The contractor is under the impression that if we, if, if the town gives them a 30-day temporary CO, they're going to have 30 days to fix these problems. Well, when it comes to life safety, that's not the case. They can't, they can't open their doors if these items aren't correct. So, the only other question I have is, when is the new building inspector onboard? Because he needs to be brought up to speed, as well as somebody has to issue a temporary permit, if that's decided upon.
I do think it would make sense to have Tony Z stick with this project, since he started the inspections and knows where everything is.
I gave, Tony was with me for five or six hours on Friday. I gave him a report Saturday afternoon, after some of our testing, as well as, I called him this morning, and gave him the rundown of the list. He wasn't privileged to the list, because I just, I sent it to the building department. So, his take, after my conversation was, he was not in favor of giving them a temporary So, in that conversation, we were both under the impression that Mr. Hsu was still in the loop. I spoke with Mr. Hsu this morning, and he said he was out of the loop, he couldn't look at any emails, he couldn't. I asked if he got my report, and he said he, you know, he couldn't, couldn't participate. So, after that, I found out that they, you guys were going to appoint a new inspector tonight, and I was, so, okay, well, let's find out, we would go from here. So.
So, it's my understanding that Mr. Hanks will be available tomorrow morning. I believe he was going to come in and just see where everything is, and as long as everything went well tonight. So, I believe that is the case. I would have to email or let him know that the vote was positive, but that's the case. And then we do have the other backup, too, for David Horn, and the Tom Door, that we just voted. And this is basically just to cover our building inspector, or this isn't a local building inspector, this was the recommendation of personnel.
So, can I request that Tony Z be called first on this, since he did the initial inspections and knows what the problems are?
I, I actually heard that Joe had told Tony that he's not, not to do the inspections. So, I don't believe, it's either, it's either Tony's opinion that he's not doing it, or Joe doesn't want him to do it, I'm not sure.
How about we call-
But I think we've already appointed three people that we can contact.
That was Leanne's report today.
What's that?
That was Leanne's report today.
Right. So.
So, we have fire marshal, which will work with Richard Hanks tomorrow?
Yeah.
Didn't they want a decision by the 5th? Or by like in that time?
They did.
They have a 10-day window-
Yeah.
That the contractor has to turn it over to Hilton, and then Hilton comes in with their people, and kind of takes over, and does their training, or finishes up their training with their people as well.
So, do you, did you tell them what they found, or they?
They got the report, everybody got the report on Sunday at 1:30, when I finished it.
Okay.
I still have to speak with, I saw some rebuttal emails from the contractor today, but I was also trying to understand, you know, where we were going with the, with the building inspector, so we can at least either give them where they're headed, are they going to, because they're under the impression that we were working to get them something, a temporary CO by tomorrow. Because I believe they posted an opening date of like the 19th of March.
I think they said something about-
I thought it was the 15th.
Big shops were coming in on the 5th, but I don't know if there was another date, the 19th, perhaps.
But if the building is not safe for occupancy, then they cannot open.
Absolutely.
So, you said per Tony, the building wasn't, the building, you couldn't give them a-
From the report I gave him-
That he wasn't-
That I listed, he was not in agreement to-
Give him a temporary one.
-give them a temporary CO at that, at that point.
Okay.
So, do we have, so is Dave meeting with Richard, or is Dave meeting with Tony?
I can let him know.
Or Dave and-
You're around in the morning?
Already have. He's just wondering what time he's going to be here tomorrow.
Okay. Because I told him I'd either call or email him and let him know the vote was positive, and we can, we can be in touch and let you know.
I'll be in the office in the morning.
You'll be in the office in the morning?
Yep.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah, the Worcester Business Journal's published April 18th.
Has an opening date?
Oh.
That was, that's on the Facebook page that I talked about.
And the manager's coming by later this week to pick up the alcohol license, they never picked it up, because they were trying to get through the construction piece first, so.
Right. Okay. All right. And the local building inspector, at the moment, the hiring of one is on hold per personnel. But we do have, fortunately, three people that we can contact as needed to help in Joe's absence.
Chris, could I ask a simple question? Is there one person of the three that are considered the boss?
Richard Hanks would be the first building inspector, David Horn was the second, and the other one was a-
Tom Store.
Yeah, would be the third.
Conditional.
Executive recruitment updates, interim fire chief, EMS chief contract, and you're all sworn in, Jim?
Yes.
Absolutely. Saw the pictures. They going up on Facebook?
Facebook celebrity.
You don't like that, so, oh, yeah.
You look very fire-like, with all your gear on. Like, is that Jim? I'm looking, I'm like, is that Jim?
That was a winter coat.
I was going to say, that was a big puffy green coat, it wasn't a-
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, because there was the one with the green coat, and then there was one with fire, fire stuff.
Ah.
Yep.
That was a good one.
All right. Well, I think everything went well. Interim fire EMS chief contract swearing, fire-
So, that's all done?
EMS chief, we're good?
Fire, I haven't heard of one that posting the fire chief advertisement.
No, I haven't either, but I assume it's going to be very shortly.
Yeah, but it looks like town administrator mightn't be this week.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
And then we need to talk about the posting, the timeline for treasure collector.
Where are they posting the TA? Where are they?
MRI has their own website.
They have their own.
So, every, all traffic is going to be pointed to them, but when they finally get it posted, then it'll go to the MMA website, our website, Telegram and Gazette, I think they're going to go to. It's going to be several places.
Okay.
I think all of the globe, too?
No.
No, we decided not-
No, no globe.
They decided the other one's better.
Yeah, because the other ones-
Do we need to approve the-
Average title?
Yeah.
What, venues?
Well, I mean, there were costs associated with this, do we need to approve those before they spend the money? Because we actually pay for that, they don't pay for that.
I think I saw it in an email, the, each of the places and the cost.
Yeah.
Did you get that, too, Mary, or?
Yeah, I mean, I got it.
Am I just dreaming?
No, no, you saw it.
We can-
I just said that I thought that is correct, but you're right.
We need to approve it, because we're paying for it.
Right.
You may just have to pull it up.
So.
Do you want to just put that on next week's agenda?
Oh, I think they need to advertise it.
This week?
Yeah.
Do we want to put a cap on it, or do we know about how much it is?
Well, they estimated 1,500.
Do we want to?
I think it was 1,500.
That was what they stated in their proposal. That, it looks like that's about right, too, especially if they're avoiding the globe.
Is this coming from our, the article?
See, that's why I thought the globe.
Because we did have a cost savings there.
Can I motion to approve a maximum of 1,500 dollars?
So, I said, just in terms of history, you typically advertise, the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, MMA, Facebook, and website, he said, we find it worthwhile to advertise at least one newspaper, which I think you're saying Telegram and Gazette. Our professional publication seems to reach the same pool as the globe, so we're leaning towards the Worcester paper to generate. If you want me to just send that back and confirm that?
No globe.
That it should not throw in the globe.
No, he, I don't think he is going to.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, I'll just confirm it with him, all right?
You can confirm it if you'd like, I think we, you already talked about it with me.
So, you'd want MMA, their own website, MMA, Worcester Telegram Gazette, our website.
Right.
And everything points to the MRI website with their email address to take everything in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What about professional association portal and publications? Is there a cause for that? I'm just, I'm reading off the email.
That was for town administrator, so I was saying, like, the FCAM, Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, for fire chief, but I can let the fire people know that you want, the fire one probably should go in FCAM.
I think they've already decided where, but-
They didn't ask you, the fire people didn't ask you where you want it advertised.
No, I think it, I thought it came in an email, I thought-
It isn't, looking at it. It came from Steve Rollins-
Right.
With Bob Mercer copied, which is the town administrative team for MRI.
Right.
Not Duggan and the other guys named, but, forget, I just keep- Not Duggan and the other guy's name, what, forget, I just gave.
Brian Duggan and Bob Craig.
That's it, on the fire chief.
So we have nothing from the fire chief, so how about we just need to approve the recommended advertising
For town administrator.
For town administrator costs, associated cost.
Just confirm you're not getting a bill for the Globe, because it'd be large.
No, I don't believe we are.
I understand, I'm just
I can, I can look and see if I'm the only one who got an email perhaps too, because I thought it had the costs in it.
It did, and I can't find it, but I remember seeing it.
Oh, you saw it too?
That's why, that's why the Globe came to mind.
Right.
So then going back to Lisa, do we cap it?
What are you asking them, Mary?
Worcester Telegram Gazette, MMA.
No, 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 I mean, what are you asking them about?
Just confirm that they're not putting it in the Globe.
She's not asking, she's confirming.
Just that they're not putting it in the Globe.
Okay, confirming the cost?
Probably for either, either search, but anyhow, I'm just talking to the TA team though. Because they want to try to do it this week.
Right.
If they haven't already.
They had certain amounts for each of the items in the email.
Right, you guys are remembering.
And I just didn't add up whether it was under 1,500 dollars.
If you had to, you could eat it out of the selectmen expenses if you, you know, I'm just
But we, we have approved it, so.
Right, the 1,500.
Okay. All right. So, back to treasure collector. Do we want to post now? Or later?
He goes till July 1st, right?
Yes.
Originally, the only reason why I brought this back up now is because when you, we held it before, I almost pulled the trigger on it and I pulled it all back from everybody. He said the March, April timeframe for this to re-surface, probably mid-April, do you want to discuss it then?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask this, one of the things that I think after the last TA forum, Steve Rollins asked me whether I thought, I thought the board might like to wait and let the TA hire the treasure, which would mean we would have to give an additional extension. And so or do we want to just go ahead with the search?
I move that we give an additional extension and have the TA help with this search.
You can do it in April or May.
Right, I mean, we don't have to give the extension now, but that's what I wanted was to hear your opinion.
Yeah. I'm okay with extending it.
Okay.
If we have to.
So push this out until like maybe June, early June, because you're not even gonna get through town meeting first, make sure it's funded and yada yada. Okay, so that'll go back to June.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
I will be in touch, don't be scared. I do.
You can find him.
I can find him.
All right. You may, you may even want to let the people who volunteered to be on that screening committee, let them know that you know, we're gonna push that out for a bit. The 1870 Town Hall Manager Discussion. I wanted to know from the board if they were interested in having the Town Hall Advisory Committee be the screening committee for this position. I think, Mary, you had dressed, drafted a an ad?
Oh yeah, it's just
Yeah.
They are the ones who work most closely with this individual, so I would say yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Evy asked me to meet with her or to come to their meeting, I believe it's tomorrow at 1 o'clock. And I can let her know. She, she thought it was okay with her, I don't know if she talked with the other members of the Advisory Committee. I think, and then they were, they had talked about, we did put together the job description, which we recently approved. There would be an ad. And I think the Advisory Committee may have been thinking that even though we went from 10 to 15 hours, we may even want to, they may, I don't know if they were recommending more than 15, like maybe 20? Or not, but I can find that out on tomorrow afternoon. And let you all know and
Personnel approved this one, right?
The job description.
Yeah.
But they don't have a budget because they're a revolving account, so there is no
Right, and so that would be
If you're changing the
The stipulation of
Personnel would need to approve perhaps that, I think, because part of the advertisement is the number of hours per week, which no one else is reviewing that, you know what I mean, like you don't have a budget.
Right.
I thought you wanted a budget.
Did you vote to try and push that up as well, or am I like making this stuff up in my head?
Kind of cable. Yeah, it says June says
Looking for more marketing, so possibly
Yes.
Position wise.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And I might, I might I was wondering, do you think maybe another person added to the Town Hall Advisory Committee, perhaps for the screening? That has some marketing background, do you think that would be helpful? Or do you think that Evy and
I think Debbie's pretty darn good at marketing.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I didn't know, you know. You're probably right.
But the idea that they don't have a budget, kind of like cable didn't have a budget, they operate outside the regular on the bus budget.
Right.
Same with 1870 Town Hall, can they afford
Well, that's the question, and I think they should be able to answer that. Hopefully, or?
That would be up to them.
Okay. Well, I, that was one of the things I was gonna press upon them if they want to
If they're getting more business, they would require more hours, which would then pay for more, the more business would pay for the more hours, so.
Because they haven't taken back all their expenses yet, so.
Okay. All right. The execution of patrol officer contract. Did you all have a chance to look, of course you already know. Did you have a chance to look at the changes and whether you want to vote it tonight, or do you have questions for Tom Galvin?
Did we said that they settled the question, where there was a discussion if it was two years versus three years?
It's 30.
It is 30, okay, all right, then I'm good. As long as people are in the know.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, where
Do you want to sign that, it's actually in there.
Oh, it's in there, go ahead.
Greens, greens and blues?
Yeah, I ran out of blue.
Okay.
Green was as close as I could get.
All right, should I take these off, would that be helpful or?
I just did.
Richard Hanks says we'll be in at 8 a.m.
Cool. 3, 4?
Yes.
Great, thanks. All right, on to new business.
I had, my list of 10, it whittled down pretty quick. The, well, we're picking things off along the way, the unsung heroines. Are we gonna do anything with that, are we gonna put it out on the
I don't think that that's what they were advertising it as.
I know, but I mean, they were looking for us.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I think that's somebody who's taken women's issues to another level and I don't think that we have
Anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, unless you know somebody personally that you'd wanted to recommend, right?
Okay.
Just, just looking at the description on the, the organization's thing that didn't seem to coincide with
All right, well, I didn't see any feedback, so I figured I'd leave it. I know the Berlin website about the emails and
That's actually how it works, what you were asking, it's just there was no category, so general emails do come to us.
Okay.
But other emails, it's just, there probably needs to be a category about taxes and questions or something like that, and you can put additional ones in there, but I'm sure because there wasn't something like that, if you go look, it went to general.
All right, so we'll keep an eye on it.
And general ones, it is appropriate for them to come to the board.
Okay. And then the last one I had was Holly.
Me too.
Okay, all right, I'm done after Holly.
So, how do we want to proceed with that, do we want to have one of us meet with Holly, do we want to have three of us meet with Holly?
It's easier if one of us meet and take notes and distribute and
And what, what she'd like answers to issue, of her issues, okay. Volunteers?
I can do that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Because obviously I want to help her out in any way that we can.
Yes, I do too.
And help out the council on aging, they're an important part, so we just need to make sure that we give them the support, yeah, because I'd like to, I mean, because she sent a bolt load of all policies, but I don't know where they ever went, I mean, I gave her feedback, but, and then they just went away, so.
I think it might help to even do the, look at the job description again and I mean, we put that together, I think we supported it.
I also, I did reach out today to Boylston, if you have any questions that you'd like me to ask their council and aging director. Just, I wanted to just check and see how they did some of the bookkeeping stuff and that, if there was an alternative way we could get some of like Holly's payroll and different things taken care of, so.
Yeah, I mean, because she's got some great ideas out there. Just want to make sure that she's heard and taken care of, I don't want to lose her. So. All right.
Okay, so you'll keep us updated whenever you have a chance to meet, you can go put it on an agenda and talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we get yours covered?
You did, there were only a few, hey, hey.
Lisa, you have anything?
Mine were all brought up during various
I have one thing. I spoke to Rick Holland from KP Law about the agreement. The solar agreement. I told him that we wanted him to help us out to do the negotiations, he told me of a few suggestions that he had and then said he would send me an email and I haven't received it yet, so. I'll touch base with him again. Just to make sure, because I assumed that that might be something that would be on the annual town meeting warrant.
As a placeholder.
It is as a placeholder, but you know, you have to have something more specific.
Yeah, you should be further along by now.
So I'll touch base with them again. Okay. All right. I believe that's it.
The developer is reaching out to the town saying connect with me.
Right.
So I can take that email and send it right to Rich Holland and say, connect with him?
Uh, yeah, I guess so. That was probably last week sometime, maybe?
It was.
Okay, yeah. All right, and he knows, he knows my contact information if he
I'll copy the board.
If he wants to, if he has any questions or anything, but I don't think this board has the expertise to negotiate a solar pilot. So
Did you ever hear anything, you sent a email the other day about the, couldn't find a form for the traffic study?
Oh, I
Because I poked her on the website either.
I found, I found the email and I sent it off and then I forgot to copy the person on it, right?
Oh, that guy, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want me to find it and send it?
No, I, I already have.
Oh, you did, okay.
And and so now he's sent me the link to do the get, to put together the traffic information.
Okay. Oh, it used to be a paper form, so they, they want you to do it electronically?
It's online, it was supposed to be online on their website, and then when I went there, it wasn't there anywhere.
They do this every year.
And so I
You identify your, your chosen
This is CMR PC.
Yeah, yeah, same every year, every year.
So she, he sent me the link, so I'll, I'll take a look at it again.
Okay, yeah, because I had reached out to Representative Naughton again
Right.
on that, heard nothing, CSX, heard nothing. See if he could do anything about SA Farm, because he had mentioned it, and I know the DEP is over it, all over it, but I'm thinking an extra arm, him, maybe Attorney General Maura Healy, I don't know. And again, I know it's not in our town, but it's impacting our residents.
Right.
So.
And I, it's on my to-do list, I just have not had a chance to contact the town administrator in Northborough.
Okay.
But it's still on my to-do list.
All right.
So I was hoping to reach out perhaps in the next day or so.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. And no old business? Nope.
No.
Okay, then we have no need for executive session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.